On the agenda is the Mall Harbor, large vessel dockage, CFA 2018. And I think this Ray?
Yeah.
Ray?
We need a resolution of support from the council to apply for some funding from the local waterfront privatization program run by the Department of State. We received some funding last year from that program to design of the docks. The design is well underway.
You know what, Ray? I usually come up here just because cameras that way in Brooklyn if I want to be able to see.
I'll hold your beautiful. Okay. Thank you. So we please to be here tonight to talk about a resolution that we need to support, a grantification that is being submitted next Friday to the state. It goes to the New York State Department of State. It is to support the construction of dock down at Mall Harbor. There is no city manager required. They grant by eighty-five percent of the funding. The Velcro of Mall Harbor, the legislature has graciously agreed to pay other fifteen percent. So there's no cost to the city. So we basically just needed resolutions of support and encouragement. We have the Secretary of State down at the harbor. Mayor hosted her. She was very impressed with the site. It is the biggest waterfront development in our state. And it's a very successful project.
This dock allows us to do two very important things. One, it allows for larger vessels to tie up at the harbor that can't now get into the marina. So they would tie up.
That we built in front of the harbor. And so that larger vessels that are going by touring boats, just large boats, yachts, and others can tie up and come in and visit, visit downtown, visit our community, spend money, and enjoy themselves. It also, very importantly, allows us to host regattas, which are very popular.
And other events on the river. So you'll have a facility that has power, that has docks, so that all of these various, you know, rowing clubs and regatta events can now be hosted in Schenectady. Because the marina is great, but we really need this facility as well. So we're very optimistic about the grant. We're working closely with the city, with the developer to put the application in. And if we get your resolution of support next Monday, we can send it into the state next Friday and hopefully get some word about this funding later in the year. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a comment. The Metroplex is a lot of time. It's a important project, but in terms of skilled and capable outcome, these are not necessarily guaranteed projects. Very strong application. And resolution of support of local legislative body improves the overall scoring. And I'm not aware of any other ones that are in the pipeline, even though there may be some. And if anybody becomes aware of any other group that's putting money in because of the deadline next week, I would ask the council to consider doing a resolution in support of it, only because it helps point system in terms of competitiveness of it. It gets a higher ranking. This, you know, people haven't been down there yet. Would encourage people to go down and see the harbor, see the amphitheater. It's a really transformational project. And we're very excited about the next item on the agenda, too, the Crane Street facade. That's also in the state. But one other comment is so great to see our community engaging and having so much fun and utilizing. You know, we see pictures in the paper of boats out at the harbor and the fireworks, the concerts, people down at the marina, you know, enjoying themselves. And to think for so many years, the community, people who actually had my job previously in economic development, people who sat in some of these seats, actually worked against efforts to connect Schenectady to our waterfront. It's really incredible to think that way, but people who were the economic development of previous museums we talked about, actually thwarted efforts to connect Schenectady back to the waterfront. So the harbor, casino, Mall Harbor, it's been such a success. One of the most important aspects of the project is that people can go down, walk along Mall Harbor, have a couple of access, enjoy the marina, enjoy the boats, rent a kayak for the day, go to Druthers, go, you know, just enjoy our waterfront. And so that is just so exciting. And this is another component that allows us to host even more event exciting things. We appreciate everyone's support and whatever one of this moves is closing.
Are there any other questions? All in favor? Hi. Very much.
Just stay a minute, but I want to go to the next project.
All right. So the next project is Main Street Grant, renovation of Mount Pleasant. Actually, I was at a meeting this morning, and there are nine property owners that have applied for the funding. We need to support this so that it, so the funding grant can be put in. I believe they also have a deadline on Friday. So I'm asking we move this forward so that we can see the revitalization of the Crane Street merchant area. Move it. Second. All in favor? Thank you so much. Next is just quarterly report. Quarterly property sales, I think that's an executive session. So what I want to do is.
Motion to recess.
All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you.
Call toward the public safety. I'm going to do some switching around here. I'm going to take a presentation from the civilian police review board first, and we have the chair here.
Can you hear me? Martin Alpo?
Please.
Sure. We give you the microphone. Good voice. I got a strong voice. Yeah, there you go. So, yeah, I was invited in as current chair. Wonderfully, I fell into that position. It was a quick vote. But to give you some quick glimpse of what's going on, we've had overall.
The status and tenor of the committee has been very good and very positive. This year to date, we've had ten cases heard and judged upon for action. The board is actively engaged in providing the advice on procedural and other actions that the department administration can actually move forward into positive actions or positive directions for the police force. They can use these in, you know, effecting change for their policing that they are using. Many of the cases were found as exonerated. And those, I would point out that those exonerations were well warranted based on the facts of the investigations. And many of the cases show that the actions of our police department are very well in line with good policing practices across the country. On other issues, we've had, we've addressed the creation of a community outreach committee for the civilian police review board. That is in direct, you know, kind of feedback from the public was to get us out into the public more with forums, with brochures, and just with general knowledge of what the police review board does. So this was a good step for us. That was actually, we saw that was in the bylaws, but we just ensured that it was in the bylaws so that that creation can continue if there are other committees that need to be established. We've also made sure that the bylaws that we have currently pose that there was no bias in any way with regards to the selection of any members who would serve on the committee. So we've made sure that that is, the language is in place that ensures that there is no bias whatsoever. All members now receive training on use of force, which was never really given in the past, when we now go through a use of force training with Schenectady PD. Our group this year also went through the implicit bias training that is currently being implemented at the police department. So overall, we're getting a good thorough knowledge of exactly how the police force operates and puts forward policing practices so that we have a good knowledge when we look at the cases to understand exactly what extent they can go or if it was too far. This is, in the end, this is always accompanied by a field ride-along so that our members fully understand, you know, what happens in a daily routine of a police officer. The board has made a request for funding for membership in ACOAL, the National Association of Civilian Oversight for Law Enforcement Organizations. This is a professional affiliation, and it would offer the CPRB more access to data across the country from other civilian oversight groups in terms of what types of decisions they see, what types of cases they see, and what types of actions and directions they give back to their police departments so that they can affect better policing in their communities. To date, I don't know, I mean, I think we put that forward. I'm not sure if that went through in anything, but.
Yes, it did through.
Okay. So the total funding for that, I believe, was about $400 for the membership. That's a yearly membership. But it would give us access to a lot of, you know, good data and actually allow our members to have access to all the research and data that would be available to them. And that, I will submit an actual copy of this to the committee here. But this actually has all of our cases that were heard and actions based on those cases, whether they were not sustained or sustained or exonerated. And in another action, we've had only two meetings missed this month for July, which was due to no cases being present. If there's no cases in investigation, we don't typically have a meeting. And the other meeting was in April, was canceled. I was deployed to Guatemala, so I couldn't really chair the meeting from Guatemala, but I would have liked to try. And I think in February, we had a weather suspension because of snow. So we should be meeting, our next meeting will be August 15th with the regular schedule, we're hoping. Questions?
Yes, ma'am. You said that you literally suggested to the police department. Is that in your report or is that something you found?
I did put that in the report because it's usually based per case. But you know, for good example of advice we've given to them, they had an incident where a child was injured in one of the cases that was brought forward. And in that particular case, we had recommended that, you know, they, you know, how they approached the, basically the displays or how they do that should be, you know, approached differently. We also had a case in which a canine was used, and gentleman said that the canine had, you know, destroyed his car interior. We suggested that the police department do, since they have available to them cameras, take pictures before search, after search, to, you know, just ensure that that action, you know, if he's saying it was destroyed by a dog, well, have proof that it was or wasn't so that you can back yourselves up in that particular case. That helps us too in terms of the, you know, you know, when we evaluate those cases objectively, if we can see evidence to, you know, refute that, you know, position, then we can clearly say, yes, this is what happened. There was damage, but unfortunately, that damage, you know, may have been warranted too, based on the search. So it would all depend on that case. The other was an excessive force case where an officer was using tactical gloves, which are hard-knuckled kevlar gloves. The suggestion was to actually implement a policy at the police department that prohibits that type of equipment in the police officer's equipment gear. That was not in place. So that was something that, you know, we were ensuring that that was, you know, something that went forward. There's no reason to have that type of equipment. I think we made recommendation that an exception would possibly be tactical teams or special tactical teams where that might be needed for breach and entry. But that should be the only exception if they're part of, you know, a specialized group or unit. But otherwise, that should not be in their arsenal. Yes, ma'am.
Are there openings right now or?
We are, I believe, as of today, we are going to be fully, full complement on the board. We just have four new members who are just recently joining us. So that should round us out for a full board this session.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah. It should be good. No sweating about if we have a majority or not.
And one other question. Is there a vice chair in some of your actions that you get to?
Yeah, no, we don't have a vice chair. It'll be something I will look into though, because I don't know if we've actually ever had a vice chair on the group, but it's something I will be looking into. We've, we've been definitely looking at how to restructure those types of things within the bylaws to ensure that we have, one, a succession plan, but also to ensure the committee structure too, that we can have people that are willing to chair or drive those particular programs forward.
Congratulations on being there.
Yeah, for us, that was a big step. Yes, definitely. Any other questions?
Any other question?
Wonderful. Yeah. I can get back out there and do those.
All right. Yes.
Appreciate it. Yes, I'll forward to everybody. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Okay, sure. Absolutely. No problem. Thank you.
The other item is paving of the yards driveway. And I'm going to ask Ms. McCarthy to comment on this for us. That's where we are with this.
Again, this is part of the ongoing view for code enforcement. The paving is a significant subset of that. The current code reflects who's responsible for getting the permits and seeking proof as homeowners and any person in the code doing it. But what I would submit is to ask the council to consider changing that so it specifically delineates and holds contractors responsible for doing, where again, the homeowner who's doing the project, whether it's electrical, plumbing, paving, it may be the only time you're doing that in your lifetime. You may be doing it once every 10 years. The homeowner doesn't necessarily have the technical background to understand the code of what is required and what isn't required. The contractor should know, probably does know, but looks to do and run around the system and doesn't get the permit. And so to look to change that and have it more clearly delineate that a contractor is responsible or equally responsible as the homeowner when they undertake a project, they have to get the appropriate permit due to notification. If we're notified in advance, there's some of these times where, you know, paving, landscaping, it's appropriate, it's proper, we want to work with the homeowner to do it. There's other times they go in and they're abusing the system. They're, I believe, devaluing some property. They pave bigger areas than they should, and you look at the entire scheme of things, really not attractive and creates issues for some of the adjacent property owners that involve drainage, affects adjacent property. And I think holding the contractors more specifically accountable will help get that messaging out so we're getting compliance and also make it more clear in terms of ability for enforcement. Go ahead, miss.
So if a contractor, so if the homeowner goes and pulls the permit telling you the contractor should pull the permit or?
I just want the permit pulled. What happens in too many of these things?
Is they don't?
They don't get a permit.
I thought that it was, I thought that anybody paid more than, I don't know, forty square feet had to have a permit.
Correct.
So if that's happening.
If they get the permit, we're not getting the flagrant violation except for being approved. It's where paving is really being done without a permit being.
So if there's a, there's a contractor that comes into the city and pays without a permit and we?
They're, they're under the code today, they're technically responsible.
Okay.
But that wording is just any person.
Okay.
So it's generic, it's the property owner, it's anybody walking down the street. And what I would ask is look at changing code to specifically delineate a contractor's role, they be held responsible, and that simultaneously maybe look at that penalty schedule going through this couple of weeks. So I. You?
So if, say someone pulls the permit, but they don't hire a contractor, they have a certain, or something like that, then who is then responsible for that?
Be the homeowner. The homeowner still can be ultimately responsible. But we're going to go back and hence it. In most times, if they pull the permit, they're going to be in compliance. We're going to inspect them, going to work with them to see the work is done properly.
So if, all right, so they pull their permit, they go and they pay more than they, than, or than they should.
Then we go back to what most times is happening. We have examples different, but where the flagrant violations are occurring, people are not pulling the permit.
Should they pull it and then they overpay or like that or whatever?
Then we, it's much easier to do the enforcement. The other problem with the enforcement is when is the work done? They say, oh, no, that's been that way for 10 years, even though it's clearly new, black tide. If they pull the permit, we know when they start, give or take a little bit, and also are able to verify what the conditions were before the work started. So you can say that it's in compliance or know that they paved in excess of the permit, requested them to be able to do or what code allows them to be. Go ahead, miss.
And can I assume that, first of all, when they pull the permit, they have to go and ask what they pay, right? And secondly, that we're educating them as to strains of the code and what can't be seen?
Correct.
So we're doing the education upfront and it's permit states?
And I would like the whole evolution of the code's department engineering work to begin, is they're not seen as an adversary in these projects, but they're seen as an asset to somebody who's doing the work. Because our staff see these projects every day where a homeowner, business owner, again, may only be doing this one time in their lifetime or one time every decade. Go ahead, miss.
I think the big question is though, a lot of plans we do, somebody isn't, so how do we address that?
And it's doing the enforcement, it comes documented, part of the problem is documenting what the conditions were for and when they occurred. And it's, there are more complicated cases where people say, no, that's the way it's always been. The contractor said, oh, no, I didn't do the work. So that is the contractor I use. We have to go back and recreate or disprove some of the theories that there, the representations of that.
The police job is to right now to look at that issue and say it's not, this engineer is guilty.
Depending on what the fact is, the law department could be engineering, could be coding. And a lot of times, it's all.
So how do we coordinate? Because I have at least one specific complaint where it's just a couple of years ago. I understand what you're saying about.
It's one of the things of doing internal, as you're right, just here before, need to change some of those job descriptions of people cross-training. So we're not sending two or three people to property for, for different things where the underlying problem is the same thing. You know, it's neglect, it's not proper maintenance, going in to be able to, the ideal for it would be, please, working with people, doing an educated process, telling them what the expectations are, what the rules are. Those individuals who do it in a flagrant manner and just hope to disregard it, you can document it, take it forward, and to have.
If they don't pull the permit, how do we do it? That's the thing. I think a lot of people that are doing this fly-by-night stuff, they're not going to get a permit. So we're back to swill. That's the big problem.
But it's some of the observation is today, they don't think they're responsible. Get that element of denial. So I'm asking that we put in the codes of contractors who is specifically responsible for pulling the permit. And it's guaranteed it's going to be a fantasy of solving all the problems, but hopefully it will be a component in getting us to where we want to be in terms of.
Well, can we often hold the homeowner's spot or is there a problem?
Yes. That is who holds the, is responsible.
So they should be aware, and when somebody's don't work for, they need a permit.
Even though, like, the last time this came up, like, an example of a furnace where somebody, something starts to go wrong with the furnace, those calls usually don't happen but the second week of July, somebody goes in, looks at it, and as opposed to what the homeowner thinks may be a repair, it ends up, oh, it's been a major failure, it's a unit you've got to replace, whole thing, where the repair would not have necessarily required a permit. The replacement requires a permit. The homeowner doesn't necessarily know that. They call them in the first part of December. They want the furnace replaced that day. They're not worried about getting the permit. They need it. Exactly. And even though we can't place, process words in urgency situation, a contractor can go in, do the work without a permit on nights and weekends, and do the notification on the next business day, do the follow-up inspection, document.
Education.
Yes.
We can't pay for that part, but people, that they need a permit to pay.
So, so maybe with two weeks being off to work on the new proposals.
I think we could look at modifying that language in the permit ordinance, that part, I don't know if that's part of a public hearing. And then the other side of it is to, I apologize, I didn't, we actually didn't, look at the fee structure for the penalties. Might be a difference between what the homeowner is penalized and what the contractor is.
So we'll bring it back in two weeks. Sorry.
Call for a public hearing tonight, just in case, because we are seeking to organize.
Yes.
Because that's going to lengthen the cycle.
Yeah.
And then if we don't need a public hearing, we don't need a public hearing. How do we start a process?
Yes.
Do we need a public hearing? We're going to do it again.
Yeah, we should change the practice, change the, are you calling it now or in two weeks?
Yes. So we'll have a resolution to call for a public hearing. The second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any other businesses for public safety?
Twitter.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Call order, finance committee, Herbert restoring taxable status to various parcels. I imagine it's going to be.
Yes. Sixteen parcels were placed on withdrawn property lists back years ago because what happened is value, they were vacant lots, so essentially, I just happened a while ago, but for some reason, they were taken off the tax status roll and put on. So they can't be taxed. We looked into it a little bit. We were not able to do abandonment of the rate plan, so we're asking people to authorize us to back on tax status. They're all privately owned. They're not owned by the city.
Any questions? Motion?
Yes. Sorry.
So property owners who are, are aware, they're all privately owned, so they aware?
So, property owners who are aware, they're all privately owned, so they aware that, so right now they're not paying taxes?
That's right.
Or they have been made aware that it's coming?
Well, they'll be made aware, I think it's back on the tax status roll, get a bill.
Okay, so, so I know they'll get a bill, but my question is, will they be getting a letter, something for the bill process, because that's what they're...
They haven't gotten anything yet, can send a letter.
I just think it's a great thing.
Yeah.
Because if they see huge increase in taxes, they're going to want to buy, but like, oh, it's fine.
Mr. Muda Baron?
Are we going back to 2013 or just current?
No, just current.
Right.
So there is a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Will she adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Why not?
Call to Order Government Operations, just asking for a ceremonial, just asking for a ceremonial resolution for Marymore Wallinger, she's been recognized at the music theme gala, give an additional recognition at the next council. All in favor? Anything else to come before our operations proceed? All in favor? Yep?
Hey, I want to reopen city planning and development and ask that we make a motion to go into executive session to discuss planning litigation as outlined by the topics on the Claims Committee agenda, and also we have nothing on claims tonight, so this is only going to be discussed sale or real property where we would be affected by the city and community development and planning as outlined. So we need to go into executive session to discuss the sale.
Just for, any council, if we have any questions on the quarterly report, we could just mail them to Rachel. Back in the next couple of days.
Sure.
So moved it.
Second.
Okay, we're in executive session.